This meeting of the city council work session to order and Linda, would you please call the role?
Absolutely. Good evening. Counselor Stapleton.
I'm here.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
I as well.
Good evening. Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Leon? Counselor Leon? Okay. Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Nordike?
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Varney?
Here.
Thank you. And Mayor Bennett?
Here. Thank you, Linda. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, Chris, the approval of the special meeting agenda?
I move approval of the special meeting agenda.
Second.
Second by Phillips. Is there any objection? Okay, we'll move on then. Any additions or deletions? Okay. And I'm gonna then turn this over to our acting city manager, Kristen Rutherford, and she'll get us going on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get us going, I first want to introduce Keith Staley to the community. Keith is our incoming city manager in September and he is joining us tonight in advance of his arrival here at the office so that he can hear firsthand firsthand what council's policy agenda is all about and and speed up his onboarding, I think, when he arrives. So Keith, do you wanna say hello or any comments before we move on?
Absolutely. Thank you, Kristen. I appreciate the introduction and hello, good evening, Mayor Bennett and the rest of the counselors. It's great to be here in my first meeting. I do not plan to participate any more than what I'm doing right now. But I do, I will be following along and look forward to coming to Salem on September 12th. See you then. Thank you.
Great. We'll look forward to it. Thanks, Keith. Thank you for attending this evening.
You bet.
Thank you. So for Keith's benefit and those in the community who may not know, we have typically had two meetings a year to talk about the council policy agenda. Starting this summer, we're changing this to quarterly meetings to provide more opportunity for updates from staff, for council to have more opportunity to discuss items on the policy agenda and opportunities to introduce new items. So we have a number of updates to provide. We have a staff initiated topic to introduce about the airport and then at the end of the meeting, we can discuss any items that council members may want to introduce this evening for us to bring back at the November meeting. So I'm gonna turn this over to Courtney, who has developed a PowerPoint to walk us through all of the updates. And when she's completed that, then we'll pivot to our airport discussion and talk about next steps there and then move on to any council items.
Thank you, Kristen. So again, I'm Courtney Knox-Bush and I work in the city manager's office and I have for you tonight a screen share of an update on the policy agenda. Again, this is the 2022 policy agenda and these are the priorities that the city council set forward as we started out the calendar year. This is our start of a new fiscal year, which is why we're so interested in sharing with you our progress at this point. We have, as Kristen was mentioning, we have the goal of looking ahead to 2023 and we're providing you with this interim progress report at the start of this fiscal year just to start inviting conversation about other priorities. So I will begin. I'm trying. There. So again, the goal is really to start the conversation about the coming year, about 2023. And we have sort of that cyclic annual calendar that we try to follow. So we're hoping that we'll have some ideas or initiatives that you'd like us to follow up with as we get ready in November for the coming year work session. So as a reminder, there were four key priorities that really set the framework for how we started the 2022 policy agenda. And all of the priorities and policy initiatives are organized in those four broad areas. The first being responding to our sheltering crisis, the second being planning for our future, and the third being engaging our community, and the fourth being sustaining infrastructure and services. And if you can see me, here is the example of the policy agenda that you might have seen. The screen's kind of fuzzy, but the hard document is available. It was put in your boxes and it was also part of what we transmitted in March when the council adopted the policy agenda. It's online as well at any point you wish to view it. So here are some key highlights as we start out. It's important to note that most of the activities are underway. There's an exception of two things that are noted here in this slide. The Riparian Inventory for the Natural Resources, that hasn't started. It is on schedule and it will begin in 2023. And then the revenue options, sorry, last quarter of '22. And then the revenue options are something that we're on schedule to begin in 2023. Several of the major initiatives, like the Our Salem Project culminating several years of work, was approved by council on Monday night as the last step. The new city website was launched in mid-June. And so those things are already complete as we start this progress report. You will also be receiving some more detailed updates in September about two other key initiatives. The first being the slowing the vehicle speeds on neighborhood streets and the second being diversity, equity, and inclusion. Our progress towards that initiative is also going to be reported to you in September. And as Kristen mentioned, we have a couple things that are showing up in community conversation that we want to also spend some time listening and hearing your conversation this evening about both commercial air service and solid waste policy as it relates to climate action. And so with that, I'll get into some of the details. There. In that first area of responding to our sheltering crisis. The report in your packet gives quite a bit more detail about our progress to date. I'm really gonna be focusing on the next big thing that's coming forward. This has seven different initiatives in it, the first being hiring and training that's occurring right now on that new seven-member cross-functional team that will be leading coordination of resources and support to those living unsheltered in our community. And will also be responding to requests of concern about public health conditions in some areas of town. The second, the Navigation Center, we're anticipating opening that in the winter of 2022. The next one about micro shelter villages, there's quite a bit more detail again in your full report about all of the activity occurring among our partners in that arena. But we can look forward to moving the Portland Road site to State Street later this summer. And you'll note that sub-bullet that just references the August 21st tours of that property will be available both at 1:00 PM and 3:00 PM. On the sobering center and the mobile crisis support, mobile crisis response, those conversations are continuing with the needed community partners to make those things work in our community. And they're on a bit of a hold while we're trying to secure sustainable funding through partnerships and also through our work with the legislature. And I'll just continue on the sheltering section and then pause for questions or conversation. As it relates to transitioning more households into supportive housing, just a quick reminder that we are still funding the homeless rental assistance program. The staff report has a little bit more details about plans to transition those resources into something that might be more effective for the conditions we're currently seeing. As it relates to permanent supportive housing, we are looking forward in 2023 to the opening of the Salem Housing Authority properties at Yaquena and Sequoia Crossing. And so that will also help with permanent supportive housing in our community. And then we continue to participate in the homeless alliance. And with that, I'm just gonna pause for a minute. Come back in a couple of seconds. I wanna pause and sort of take questions, comments. And by the way, there is a whole bunch of helpful and smart people on this call who can answer any other questions as well. Counselor Hoy?
Thanks, Courtney. Just a couple of clarifying questions. You mentioned moving the Portland Road site to State Street. Did you mean Center Street?
I probably did. I was, I probably did. I was thinking about the Safeway and it probably merged into Center in my mind and came out with that word. Sorry about that.
No worries. I just wanted to, I didn't wanna leave the public with a misimpression, misimpression that we might be looking at the new site on State Street. It is in fact on Center. So the other one is the cross-functional team. That's a new term that I haven't heard. I've heard many different terms for that team. Have we settled on a name for that, that team? And I really wish that if we have, that we could say it out loud and we could start, everybody could start using the same name so we all know what we're talking about.
Yes, I was being intentionally vague there, not on the first one, thank you, but I was being intentionally vague here. We are planning to do a broader kind of launch of the new name in August as we, as we go to August next week. So that's why we're not talking about it in more discreet terms right now. Thank you.
Do you have a term for it? Do you have a name for it?
We do. We're working on one and I would rather just defer to Gretchen on that and the comms team is gonna be supporting that rollout.
Okay.
Thank you.
Vanessa? Vanessa, you there? There she is. You're still...
I appreciate your patience. We're dealing with a very, a very sick dog, so I'm gonna be going in and out of the meeting tonight. I'm gonna be turning my video off from time to time so I can attend to some things. So my apologies for any inconveniences that causes. So in general, I'm supportive of these priorities. I do want to stress a few things, especially with our incoming city manager. Thank you so much for being here and starting to do the work that you need to do to get up to speed. It's, it's a lot that you will be assuming and we're all looking forward to having you here. The, the unit that Counselor Hoy just mentioned, we have called it various things such as the Rapid Sanitation Response Team. I've expressed some concerns throughout this process. This is a very expensive garbage cleanup crew. And my, and I will just reiterate, just so as the interim city manager knows and the incoming city manager knows, the more people we house, the less we will need to spend on garbage cleanup because garbage is a product of living outdoors. So it's my hope that while I understand the immediate need for that, my hope is that as we continue to prioritize permanent housing, so transitional housing, micro shelters, all those things will lessen the need for a million dollar cleanup crew per year. Especially since that is money that we could desperately use for so many other priorities identified on this list. So those are the things that I wanted to mention. And other than that, I'm happy to see that the Mobile Crisis Unit continues to be identified as a priority because, believe me, the members of the community are still identifying that as an urgent need. And I just want to remind folks that we have a variety of cities across the Northwest that now have a Mobile Crisis Unit, including Olympia, from which our incoming city manager has hailed, as well as Portland, Eugene, and numerous other parts of the Northwest. So I look forward to discussing that priority and funding for it in September. So I look forward to speaking with my colleagues at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Jose?
Thank you, Mayor. Courtney, on the ATRAP program, I know it's been a very successful program. And you mentioned depending on the funding. But one thing I just wanted to check in with you is how the program's been going lately. You know, our sheltered community, it evolves, it's changing, it looks different, you know? And I just wanna see how the success rate or however it is you're measuring. If you have any new info for us?
You know, that's a great question and I'm going to defer to Kristen to respond. She's a lot more in the, on the ground with that.
Thanks, Courtney. So we have definitely noticed some changes over the last couple of years. We are planning to start shifting away from ATRAP because the purpose that it served at the time it was conceived, we didn't have other services to offer and it was a very, very needed program. It was very successful in housing the hardest to house at the time that it was initiated. And as we've moved forward in time and we've started adding more programs and resources, we're, we're having, experiencing a few different challenges. One is a lack of availability of units and partners in the landlord community. Another is the, the degree of need of the individuals involved in the program. And what we're pivoting to is more of the micro shelters and then the Navigation Center coming online is really going to fill that gap and be the step, that stepping stone to permanent housing that ATRAP has served. So we are keeping funding in that program in, over the next couple of years because we have individuals that are in the program and have not graduated onto vouchers and into permanent housing, you know, in that more stabilized nature yet, but they're working towards that. And then as we are moving away from ATRAP, the staff is going to shift focus to what we're seeing as, as a growing and new need in the community. And that's individuals that have stabilized on ATRAP, they've moved onto vouchers and housing, and then without the ongoing permanent support, they're destabilizing. And they're starting to have newer issues. We're seeing evictions, we're having conflicts with other tenants and landlords. So there, there continues to be an ongoing support need. So that's where we're gonna kind of shift the priorities, let these other resources like the Navigation Center fill the purpose that ATRAP had served. And then change our internal resources to getting more folks on vouchers, getting them placed, devoting those resources to sort of the voucher navigators that are finding the apartments that can meet the voucher red thresholds and then providing additional support to people once they're on vouchers.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two comments. Well, actually I have three. The first one is overall, it's good that we're moving forward on this. That's just in generally, I think we've got a lot of projects that are moving forward. Second one is the larger comment. We've had recent reports at the Salem Housing Authority about all their rebranding and all the new stuff they're gonna do and all the people they're going to add, which is all terrific. But that fits right in with our, with the problems, Kristen, that you have been mentioning, as well as other problems, you know, getting people to move and dealing with the vouchers and all that stuff. So I, you know, I scanned this. I didn't completely peruse it, but it sure seems to me that there's no mention of the Salem Housing Authority. And I don't know if that's because that's a separate agency than the city or, or it's just assuming you said we're gonna do this, it's the housing authority. So I think they have a huge role to play in this and we've expanded their role. Appropriately so. So, and they do a terrific job. So I'm, I'm hoping, you know, that their, you know, their omission was either inadvertent or deliberately because they're a different organization. And maybe you can answer that before I go on to my next comment.
Sure. Much of this work will fall under the Housing Authority.
Okay.
And so I think it's just the assumption that when we think of the city's approach to these issues, it is, in many cases, with the Housing Authority and the league.
Okay, great. Before I was on the council, I, I would make the assumption like this, it's all one big package. But now I know it's, it's not quite. On my other con, Courtney?
If I could just add, I just wanted to notice, I think in this particular case, that is how we, we have approached this in a very integrated fashion and way. The cross-functional reference was kind of silly, but, but really, these are general fund resources, city general fund resources that are supporting the homeless rental assistance program operated out of S A. So truly, in this case, we are really integrated. So it's okay to say "we" and mean "all."
Well, good. And that's, you know, that's also for the public to know. So I don't know. We're telling them tonight, but maybe if there's some other version that goes out of this, you might say in conjunction with the Salem Housing Authority or something to let them know that the whole city's involved. My minor point relates to something going on in my ward that we've been discussing almost every week when Cory Poole shows up. And that is, you know, church in the park and there's still some confusion as to whether or not any of the $8.1 million we got from the state and the county is going to be used at all to fill in the, the gap in their funding. And, you know, we heard an explanation of that on Monday night and I'm not sure I could give you my interpretation of that. So I just want people to keep that in mind, that, that's, that's, you know, that's an area that we need to be focusing on, on the micro level, not the macro level that we're talking about here. Thanks.
Sure. And we do have Josh on the call to speak to any budget matters. This is a decision that council could make to stand up more services. Every decision that's made to stand up more services at the backend will reduce how long we can offer those services until other funds come online.
Right. I understand that. And I, and I guess now that you reminded me, I thought that, that we were hoping that maybe at some future council meeting, Josh could lead us through a little discussion of, of this. I don't need to hear it now, Josh, but that's just something we ought to talk about. I mean, obviously, we can't do everything we wanna do here and we gotta make, we, you know, we've gotta prioritize. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to follow up on Counselor Nordike's comments. I think either there was some confusion or I'm not sure maybe I misunderstood, but she kept referring to a trash cleanup crew. That's, there was one part of that program that was to offer out to a nonprofit for trash, or trash cleanup. But I was speaking to the, to the multidisciplinary team that'll actually respond to crisis situations and, and that come up. And so that's the team I was referring to. Have we gone out to bid at all at all, or have we offered up that, the, the contract for the actual trash cleanup team? And if so, do we have a name for that team as well?
Yes. And yes, we have gone out to bid and the longer version of the status report on activities just references that the first RFP on that nonprofit support for that particular service did not succeed. And so we would be returning, having some conversation about what was missing and then returning that one to bid.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, Vanessa?
Sure. So we had earlier approved the Community Sanitation Response Team, which was a multidisciplinary team. It, it was comprised of both city employees as well as police officers. So that's the one that we had. I'm assuming that's the one that we're talking about. I wanna make sure that we're all on the same page. But that's the one that we were told would cost $950,000 or so per year. Are we talking about the same program here?
That, that's correct. This is the program where Courtney referenced, we are in the hiring process. It is for that program. And so it's, it's two-part. There's the, the contract with the nonprofit that we haven't secured yet to do the actual trash program. And then the rest of the group will be doing the outreach. If, if property owners have an issue, this is the group that would go out to the property to work with folks. So that piece, Gretchen has been going through the process of hiring the supervisor for that team and standing up all of the positions.
Yeah. I, I think it might, it might be probably an understatement to say it's a, it's just trash pickup. It is a fairly complicated program and I think that, that may have been the, the confusion. It's not a $1 million garbage program. It's a much more complicated program than that.
That's correct. It is more than trash and it's this team that, for example, out at Cascade Gateway, will be able to make, you know, regular and repeated visits when we have accumulating issues. And the goal is that this would keep masses of people from camping and settling in areas that they have moved out from.
And as I recall, that was gonna be comprised of two police officers and public works employees who, who, right? And so, but when I hear that it was mostly staffed by public works employees and I thought, what we were told in past meetings was that the police officers were there to ensure the safety of the city employees who are going out and doing the work. That, that's, but it seemed like the bulk of it was all about working with trash. So this feels a little bit different than what we were told before. And that's, that's what I'm, that's, that's where I feel I'm seeing some change.
So trash is a part of it. It really has more to do with issues that we've had in the past surrounding camp cleanups. So what we've experienced over the last couple of years on a very regular basis is we will, we will get calls coming into CMO. We now have a portal where folks can report encampments. We organize an internal team with police, with public works, with code enforcement and with Housing Authority staff that then go out and do outreach and then they post the camp for cleanup. And then that group, you know, convenes at the time of the cleanup. So we've got services for individuals. We've got staff to help direct them to housing and other resources at the same time the cleanup is occurring. And then after everything's cleaned up, two days, a week, you know, at some point in the future, people migrate back to the same location. And then we're off, you know, addressing the same issues and posting and doing cleanups in other locations. And over time, we'll make our way back to where we've done a prior cleanup. So, so trash is, cleanup is a part of this. But it's not the only focus of this. And having this team that's dedicated will mean that we don't have to wait a week, two weeks, three weeks to be able to bring all of these staff together and fit it into their work schedules because we will have a dedicated responsive team that can respond, do a, you know, facilitate a cleanup and then go out the next day and the day after and the day after and continue to work with individuals and offer solutions so that we're not seeing encampments immediately build up again in a location where we have just done a cleanup or, or restored property.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other? Yes, Tom?
Just to follow up to this, and maybe I didn't understand it correctly, but I also thought that, that whatever we're gonna call it, I'll just call it the Rapid Response Team for now. Weren't there some elements of counselors or social workers? I thought it was public works, police and, and, you know, civilians who could help the people with their problems?
It, it has been the Housing Authority, ATRAP and Outreach Staff.
Okay.
And we on many occasions have also had nonprofit partners join in in that outreach when we post a site.
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Phillips?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Bennett. I appreciate the discussion from my colleagues and staff tonight answering questions. I mean, just to kind of start with some comments. What was formerly known as the, the Community Sanitation Response Team or the Rapid Response Team. I mean, I think it's important for maintaining that community buy-in that's necessary to have the, the managed micro shelter sites, you know, throughout the city of Salem. I mean, we did have some pushback at the Center Street location. And I think that this helps, you know, maybe calm the minds of neighbors who are nearby that we will be able to have a more rapid response to any issues that, that do happen with the management of, you know, the, the managed micro shelter sites. So I, I think it's important, staff definitely felt the need for their safety and I really, you know, respect that. But I, I'm in favor of it, but it's, I mean, I think, you know, in the perfect world, we'd maybe wanna spend dollars directly for ending homelessness, but it's just not that simple. And, you know, it's kind of necessary at this moment in our time. I mean, unwinding it's kind of a future conversation. I guess my, my final comments would just be rhetorically, you know, how do we get the additional revenues or funds to try and get to those next couple of goals that we've, we've established? Such as, you know, a mobile, a managed, a mobile crisis response unit with civilians and something like a sobering center. And that's just, you know, we don't have that additional revenue at this time. And I'm not sure yet that even if we did have the funds, that we have, you know, entities that are capable of, of standing those up yet. So, you know, it's a, it's a work in progress, but I certainly, I just wanna... I just want to make sure that the work is still happening so that if and when we do get funds, that they they can happen. I don't want to end up in a scenario where there's there's funds from the state or maybe the county and then we're not ready to to spend those dollars on those things that the community and and the counselors have identified as as a priority. You know, personally, I think the mobile crisis response unit is probably a higher priority than the sobering center. I think getting the navigation center is critical. But, you know, they're both really important.
Okay. Ms. Retha, we're ready to spend money if they give us money along the way, aren't we?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I would also like to add that Chief Womack is on the call. And so if there are any questions about the police component of this team, he is available to speak to that.
Okay, very good. All right. Is there anything further on this homeless section that you'd like to go over?
No, I'm I'm gonna just be pausing at the end of each section. So it's perfectly timed if you're ready to transition into the broader topic of planning for our future.
I think that's where we're headed then.
Excellent.
Go ahead.
I I am. Excellent. Here we go. So in planning for our future, there were five priorities referenced. And the first is about completing our Salem. And I'd just like to say congratulations to everyone for getting through that on Monday night, the twenty fifth. The second topic, these now become follow-on pieces that are going to take the shape from our Salem and apply them to different disciplines. So the first is the transportation plan update. As you know, that's funded for this current year and it is underway. We've gotten an early start with the conversation about slowing vehicle traffic on neighborhood streets. We're expecting that work to come forward in September. And this is sort of policy considerations about the speed hump issue, about twenty is plenty and about stop signs, all focused on neighborhood traffic calming. The third larger bullet that you'll see there is launching that riparian inventory. And that's around goal five. That work has started and it's on schedule to really get going this fall as well. The next topic, yes?
Can we ask questions on this part? Do you want to finish it?
Well, I was gonna slide into the climate action, but as you wish.
Well, I'm I'm interested in the riparian inventory. What is that looking like right now? What what's going on? What will be going on on that? It's a really interesting area and one that's been talked about for a number of years.
Yes, and that's related to goal five. Kristen, are you on screen because you would like to address it? Or I know Norm Wright is also in the call.
We have Norm and Peter both involved.
How about if I stop share and come back?
And 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 really, it's it's a public works project. So Peter, I'll defer to you.
Yeah, thank you. So
Let me find somebody here.
So Mayor, you know that the city is a creek intensive area. So so there's a lot to do with respect to to what are the creeks looking like? And then and then looking at what the requirements of goal five are in the straight in the state planning rules and and seeing how we address some of those issues. As you know, you know, Salem has an unfortunate history of really impacting creeks and and our more recent history is related to to making improvements and making requirements so that so that they're more respected. So so I would I would see that work as addressing those kinds of issues.
Peter, will it also address the issues we've seen? I'll just use as example out on Wong Creek and sort of in the Battle Creek, Wong Creek area, are we gonna see work in that area or discussion of of the flooding activity? I mean, what does this look like in its outcome, I guess?
Yeah, you know, so so the flooding issues and, you know, we've had a lot of discussions about the flood issues and the issues related to what, you know, FEMA may require and what as well as the the endangered species issues on Mill Creek and others. So so our sense is that it will include all of that. We're not quite sure. We're trying to address the state planning issues. These are additional federal issues. So I can't really tell you what, you know, what details are gonna be. But we're gonna be looking at all of that. You know, we've already done some work. And there's there's more work that needs to be done, but we really want to address the goal five issues.
Okay, great. Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is directed to the riparian issue. Peter, I attended a meeting of CESTA the other night. One of your public works department was there to talk about Sheldon Ditch. Is that part of this project or is it separate from that?
Yeah, no, Sheldon Ditch is already underway. There's some some work that needs to be done with some dredging to remove some material so that it goes better to address some some bank issues, some eroded bank issues. So that's that's sort of a CIP project that's already underway.
Great, thanks. And then just one general comment, you know, you mentioned how we're we got a lot of creeks. And I think that while that is a little bit of a curse from flooding, et cetera, I think it's really a blessing and it's an asset to this community. And so we ought to open things up and make it easier. My goal at one point was to take a canoe from the state motor pool down to the new police station. And, you know, I think those are some possibilities and and we ought to make make it creek friendly, make use of make it family and creek friendly. You know, I I'm thinking of Eugene where the mill race goes underground and it stays underground all through the the city. And that's not, you know, that's not a very healthy or useful site. So I appreciate the fact that we've got our streams open, but I understand that we've got to do more to keep them streams and not flood plains.
Right. And 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 that's that's exactly what we want to do, counselor, is 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 address our existing situations, make it better, but in but in other ways, fix, you know, prior prior sins, if you will. And and I think we're very proud of what we've done at Battle Creek, you know, when we where we bought the old the old golf course and opened that area up. And so there are areas in South Salem where we're opening things up. In in town, it's harder, but that's that's where we want to head as well.
Great. Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you so much. I had a question first about the riparian or the goal five. And this is a kind of a fun one for you, Director. How do I, as a counselor who's really interested in this, become more involved and gain more information about this? Is there a way that I can get plugged in with somebody to just have a meeting and chat with them to learn more?
Yeah, ju- just as soon as we get started.
Fantastic.
So we haven't started yet, but I'll I will carry that message to Robert Chandler, Rob Romanek, and let them know that you're that you're very interested. And frankly, in your ward, I think it's important that on both sides of the river, that that you be an important part of that.
Yeah, I would love that. And while you're here, is it okay if I ask you some questions about the TSP update?
Of course.
Okay. I am really excited to hear that we're moving forward on the on the neighborhood concerns that both Counselor Gonzalez and I and the rest of council agreed were really important for us. And I'm excited to hear what what staff come back with us on. Something that Counselor Varney and I have been talking about is the Bike Walk Salem report, which was produced, I think, twelve years ago and adopted by council. And it's kind of what we have right now as far as our bike and pedestrian goals. Is that gonna be the next step in the TSP? And if not, how can I advocate for that to be the next step for us? So I think in the report, it said that we should suggested that we updated every five years. Of course, it's so hard to keep up on things like that. But I would love to see that process be really the next step in the TSP. Is that something that we could do?
Yeah. So I think there I think there's two things. One is the the what I will call more comprehensively, the the neighborhood traffic management plan, you know, so I sent counsel an email, I think about a month ago, letting you know that you had had you, Counselor Stapleton, had had a motion and Counselor Gonzalez had had a motion. And then staff is working on another piece. And I'm happy to report that actually Julie Warnicki had the idea of engaging one of our consultants of record, a DKS associates, to actually put it all together and really look at that whole process and update the neighborhood traffic management component of the TSP. So so I think the report we're gonna have in September is really just the kickoff of, you know, the conclusion of some of these efforts and then the kickoff of bringing that together. So so that that piece will be underway. The the bike and ped portion of the of the TSP was updated really not that long ago. It wasn't twelve years ago. It was more like let's say, three, four, five years ago. But we're looking at a complete update of the TSP as part of implementing our Salem. So so I think we can look not just at at the street system and stuff, but but at the the ped programs. I think all of it kind of effectively is gonna be looked at. So so I think that's I think that's coming. And I think we're planning to start in the either the of the 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 last quarter of this year, early next year to start implementing the our Salem process. So so it will all be open for discussion.
Great.
Good, good. And then one last question, Mayor, if it's all right.
Yeah.
This is about different grant opportunities. And I've been trying to pay attention to a few of them. And the Vision Zero group, I know you and I have chatted about this. Of course, you've told me that the city of Salem is really poised for this. You know, we're really doing a lot already in that in that way. But if we do go ahead and get that that kind of title, then we could find some grant funding for our TSP update. That's something I'm really interested in looking into. And then also the Safe Streets for All is another one for developing a safety plan. And I think that kind of goes hand in hand with the Vision Zero and with, you know, all of the goals that this council has really put forward as far as climate action and trying to get bike and pedestrian infrastructure built out and safer for everybody to use. So those are two grant opportunities that I would love to see staff move forward on and try and and secure some funding for us to get, you know, free up all this cash that we're all wanting to spend on different things. So those are some things that I would love to see us look into. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. Julie Warnicki and Anthony Giamallo look at all of those grant opportunities. We don't mind. If you see something, go ahead and forward it to us. And, you know, I I often send them emails and say, I know you guys probably know this, but here it is just in case. And I always get the word back. Oh, yeah, we're following that. So wherever there's opportunities where where we fit and where we can be successful, we will we will chase those grants. There are not specific to the ones that you've that you've spoken to. In general, there are grant programs that, as as Julie and Anthony assess them, we may not qualify or we may be really long shots. And just given, you know, the staffing, you know, there's only the two of them. So it's so it's not worth chasing something that we don't feel will be a a good shot for, or we're missing some pieces. But wherever we see that we have a good shot at it, we will we will absolutely apply and we look at all of them. So I appreciate that.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Barney?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to make a comment in regards to the goal five inventory. I wanted to say thank you to the council for moving this forward because, oh, I don't know, a while back, it was at the end of the list. It was going to follow the the transportation system master plan and the parks master planning. And, you know, we are having a lot of changes with our climate and it was really, really crucial that this be moved up because it will impact you know, riparian areas, where we can build, where we can grow, all kinds of things. And so me as a as a salmon biologist, it's really, really important to me. And I'm just really happy to see it moving forward. I think we need to know where our wetlands are, where, you know, our waterways are. I'd like to know if we have fish in our streams up there. I really suspect that we do. I did talk to a biologist today. I've been at a meeting down on the Umquah talking about climate change and hatcheries the last three days and some of the impacts on our on our fish. So this is very timely. And actually, this biologist lives up lives here in West Salem. And he said his neighbor across from him, they live up above Glen Creek. And his neighbor has a flooding water issue in his basement because his house is built practically on top of a spring. And so that's the sort of thing that we need to know where these things are so that we don't do that. So I just wanted to mention that because that came up this morning. Anyway, thank you all for listening.
Thank you. You know, years ago, we had a great salmon run up the up Mill Creek. I really hope and Pringle that we see those again. That's really great. I hope you'll monitor that closely because that's something we could always hope starts again. It was pretty spectacular to watch.
Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I come from a, you know, the fourth generation commercial salmon fishing family. So it's a very it's an issue near and dear to my heart. And we saw the devastation of our salmon industry in Oregon after the Tellamook burn. And so I know that how climate and different things can impact all that. But that's that's not the reason I have my hand raised. I wanted to pin down Mr. Fernandez for a moment on a couple of the things he talked about. So I thought I heard you say that we've started the the goal five work. And then I thought I heard you say that we haven't started the goal five work. So I was curious, have we started it and who is doing it?
We have not started it. We have a lot of ideas about it. That will be done out of the Planning and Development Group. So it'll be Robert Chandler's division, Rob Romanek's group.
Great. Okay, thank you. And then on the TSP, who is leading that effort?
That would be Julie Warnicki. Again, Robert Chandler's division, Julie Warnicki will do that assisted by Anthony Giamallo.
Thank you.
Anything else, Counselor? Nope. Okay. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as long as we're talking about these future goals and mobility and transportation and everything else, I'll take this opportunity to once again talk about the Salem Streetcar System, which I've been talking about informally to council on a regular basis. And it's my understanding that the Salem Kaiser Transit District is moving forward on some plans that might bring that to fruition because there are the people who are experiencing our area moving large groups of peoples around. And I have spoken with the planning people, specifically Lisa Anderson Olgoby, and also with Julie Warnicki on on this issue. And I'm assured that whatever might happen with the Salem Streetcar System would fit in with both those plans. So I've just, you know, I'm just trying to keep it in the public eye and on the council side.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Okay, go ahead then. Courtney, you want to move forward?
Thank you. The last piece is is also in this same section called Planning for Our Future. And we'll just wrap it up with the Climate Action Plan. And as many of you are already participating on the the Climate Action Plan Committee of Council, I'm just going to be rather brief and mention that we intend to bring an update to the City Council in September of twenty two. And this again is on the those things with an eye towards implementation. So that's why the committee has convened. And you'll note here at the bottom that there's a reference to this solid waste policy. Again, I'd just like to say that there is a much more detailed discussion of that topic in your full report. But what I did want to just make sure everyone was aware is that staff intend to return with a rate proposal in August. And the proposal will include every other week service option and enhancements to the low income discount program. And then we would be convening a broader conversation about other policy options in twenty twenty three. And so with that, I see Counselor Anderson has his hand up. So I'm going to stop share.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. Not surprisingly, I'm talking about the Climate Action Plan. And I think, you know, here we are, we're already seeing the another result of of the earth warming and the and the the heat domes we're seeing all over the country and the world. So I I'm glad we're gonna be reporting back in September. And I understand the primacy both in the council's mind and in the city's mind about the homeless issue and how we're gonna deal with that. But to me, on on a global wide basis, you know, if if we as individuals and we as a country can't do anything to move fast here, you know, homelessness is not gonna be our biggest problem in in thirty years from now. So I just I'm glad there's a committee and I'm glad they're moving forward. And I look forward to a comprehensive report in September.
Okay. Anything? Where are we then, Courtney?
Well, we're gonna change topics entirely and move into the engaging our community topic. And and this one has four key initiatives in it. We have one more priority area left. But in this area, we have the city website, which again I mentioned, launched in mid-June. We have an intention to bring forward We have an intention to bring forward to you some, uh, performance measure portal and a new way that people can access information about what the city's doing and how we're measuring, how well we're doing it, um, and what they think about it. All of that will be available by September in the new online portal. Um, we also plan to open the new customer service center in, in the civic center in spring of this coming year. Um, and there are many more details about that project in your written report. And then the last one is about expanding neighborhood communication. And what I wanted to just reference about that is that we're planning to do, uh, a broader survey of members of our community about communications and engagement and their preferences. Um, we're having a discussion with the neighborhood chairs in September, giving them all of those findings that we have from the survey work. And then, uh, taking information and perspective and opinions from them about how it's working in their own neighborhoods with the intent to meet, um, individually with boards and really kind of get into what their goals are for communications and engagement and discuss and make some plans for, for how best to achieve those goals. Some neighborhoods might be more interested in increasing participation in their regular meetings. Others may be more focused on having more people come to annual meetings. And so we're kind of going to be working with them individually about what their preferences are. I'm going to stop sharing. Thank you.
I think, very good. Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you. Uh, I think this is an appropriate time for this question. Um, my husband and I were just chatting about it. Um, I know that this council has made a lot of progress with our A S L interpretation and our, uh, real-time Spanish interpretation of all our meetings, uh, for council. Uh, but how is the city looking at moving forward with? Um, I also want to include that the new website has, I think, a bunch of different languages that it can be, uh, interpreted into. But what are we, are, do we have kind of a pulse or, um, an idea of what kind of is the next language in line, um, as far as use in the community? Um, are, what are the requests? You know, what are the languages that are being requested more? Um, and how, how is this, how are we thinking about this type of interaction with our community?
That's an excellent question. And if I may, I would just suggest to you that I think there are many, many more languages being spoken in our community as evidenced by the, um, language offerings in the school districts in particular. And so that's, I think, where we have our best pulse on what is needed and what we might be able to offer. Um, I haven't spoken with them in a little while, um, but I do know that also the counties are seeing an increase. They're doing, um, I, I'm not going to say it right, cha- chuk, chuk? They're doing already some translation like that. And we borrowed some help from them during the water crisis implicitly to reach that audience. So there are more languages, certainly. And the question is about how to be most effective to reach most people. And that's really, I think, where we would rely on communication and partnership with school district and the counties.
Thank you.
Counselor Barney?
Thank you. Uh, in regards to the neighborhood communication, I was really glad to see this in there because, boy, our neighborhood associations are so closely connected to so many things we do. And so many folks in the neighborhoods don't know what the neighborhood associations do. And we're seeing fewer and fewer people participating. Uh, one of the challenges we have with the West Salem Neighborhood Association was all we had was a Facebook site for a long time and not everybody uses Facebook. And we did reach out to the city to request some assistance with maybe some sort of web hosting or something so that it was more available to a broader, you know, a broader audience. Um, and that wasn't possible at the time. I'm hoping that maybe something can be worked out kind of along those lines for, for communication. I just wanted to mention that that was kind of a roadblock that we ran up against and we ended up funding, uh, our own website, which is almost, pretty much in the works. Um, but not everybody is able to do that. So I just wanted to mention that it'd be nice if you could look at that as well.
Right, thank you. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things on this one. Uh, just to follow up on Counselor Barney's comments, I don't know how it is in the rest of, uh, you know, your, your wards, but in my ward, uh, the neighborhood associations are struggling in, very significantly. And in fact, just last night, Lansing voted to, uh, seek a merger with another neighborhood association. So they're, they're seeking out, they're trying to determine now which one will be the best one. Um, and I know that NOLA is in similar conversation and there, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of talk about merging neighborhood associations, which I think is great to have thriving neighborhood associations. But if they get too big, then really geographically, then it really kind of loses the point. But I, they're struggling with participation, they're struggling with support, there, nobody's able to get a, a secretary. And so I think that if we're serious about our neighborhood association, we really need to step up our support for them because they're struggling. And I know Irma is doing her very, very best and, um, trying to manage them, but, uh, it's a difficult task. So I just wanted to put that under everybody's radar screen that some of our neighborhoods are really struggling. The other thing I wanted to mention, Courtney, is as I recall this, this topic, uh, when we first put it on the, in our, uh, in our priorities, it was, we were really talking a lot also about, uh, communications strategy for the city and a plan and, and overall sort of, you know, what's our goal here with communications? It's, and I see the list is really focused on some things, which are great. I mean, the website makeover is great and all those things. But I would also like to hear more about our, our, our plan now that we have our, I think, our P I O on board and what's, what's our plan for communication strategy? Because one of the things we struggle with, with our, um, lack of maybe effective media that reaches all the parts of our community is to get our message out to folks. And so I would really love to hear more about that. I know that we, we had initially, you know, worked on talking points, uh, for counselors so we could help get the word out. That seems to have gone away. And so I just would like to hear more about, like, what's the plan to help, uh, get our, our, our message out there better in a more strategic way?
As part of the, as part of the discussion of this in the future, Chris, or do you mean right now? I, I just want to make-
We don't have to have the conversation right now, but I thought that that was what went into that, this-
Yeah.
-but on our plan. So I was a little bit surprised to see the focus, um, because it's not how I remember the conversation. We don't need to have it right now, but I just, those are things I want to talk about going forward.
Well, the other one that I want to mention and with you, I think, and have you just maybe speak to, is you mentioned the other evening and we talked about before, the idea of a full evaluation of boards and commissions to make sure they're meeting the needs, uh, of the community and the council and how that can be dealt with. I, I'd hope you would put that into your, into this year's workload is to get that, get that done and done right.
Definitely. I, I really think that there's some, some good work that can be done there. We can be a lot more effective with, I think, by taking a, a good look at all those things. Maybe there's things we don't need to be doing, some things we need to be doing differently, uh, and that sort of thing. And I think it's just time to make a full evaluation of our boards and commissions.
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor, what I would like to propose is that, um, that staff spend some time looking at what the scope of that evaluation would be, what all is considered as a part of that. And then we could bring that back in November to roll into the council policy agenda for 2023.
Yeah, I, I think if you get it into the, I, I think it's really important that it get into the work because it, it can be one of those, uh, there's outreach needed, there's a bunch of other things. And it may well be part of what you have to do to get neighborhoods, uh, some neighborhoods revitalized. Some are very vital. The ones that have, uh, land use issues are always pretty busy. The ones that don't have a good land use issue go and tend to kind of die down. And it, it's interesting, it's been a, a long-term problem and cycle. So it'll be interesting to see if you can find a way to, to do it. Vanessa?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I definitely agree with a lot of the comments that Counselor Hoy made. Um, my own observations about neighborhood associations is that it's a very lopsided system. You have some neighborhood associations that are doing just fine, some that are struggling, some have really poor attendance records. Um, the overarching theme that I've seen with all the neighborhood associations that fall within my ward is there is an utter lack of diversity. We have virtually no young people participating, virtually no people of color participating, virtually no young working parents participating, virtually no low-income persons participating. Heck, I even had a renter say, I didn't even know I could be in a neighborhood association. I thought I had to be a landowner to be in a neighborhood association, which harkens back to, uh, the colonial days and only male property owners could vote. Uh, it's remarkable to me that, um, in today's day and age, uh, you still see echoes of that past. So, um, I think what I would love to see is new blood at every single neighborhood association. We have some phenomenal institutions in South Salem. I, I can see their faces. I have some terrific neighborhood leaders, no question. I would just like to see a wider variety of them participate, uh, because eventually folks retire. And when they do, uh, who's going to fill that void and provide some fresh ideas and new ways to connect to neighbors? Uh, it's always amazing to me that every association might represent hundreds or thousands of people. Uh, and I always wonder, five people showed up tonight, is this really representative of the thousand to two thousand to three thousand people who call this association theirs? If they know it's a thing, which many of them still don't. So, um, yeah, I, basically, this is me chiming in saying, yes, these are my observations and I look forward to see what we can do. Uh, that whatever our outreach must be though, I would love to see it bring in new blood though, for sure.
I don't know if it's, if it's colonialism so much as the old homeowners association question. And people think they're in a, uh, neighborhood association sounds a lot like a homeowners association. That's the one I kept running into. You always wonder if you should rebrand neighborhood associations as neighborhood councils or something else that suggests they have a more, uh, a more involvement in your, in your activities. But, uh, okay, the other is do a, just get a developer in to do a big, uh, a big project in your neighborhood. You will attract people into your meetings real quickly. Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to, um, really come alongside Counselor Hoy, uh, and support him in this. And, and you, Mayor, and you guys are both bringing up things that I'm, I'm been paying attention to for a while and want to see us work on. Um, and then of course, Counselor Nord, I've just brought up, uh, the thing that I wanted to kind of, uh, point out. And that is the, the lack of diversity in our boards and commissions. And maybe bringing in our D E I coordinator, um, maybe the Human Rights Commission to kind of try and figure out how do we, how do we get it so that we can have more diversity in those boards and commissions? So, um, just wanted to point that out and see if we can't find some way to, to increase the diversity there.
Okay, good. Counselor Hoy?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, just a quick follow-up on Counselor Stapleton's comments. I think her last two comments actually go really hand in hand. And that's about the interpretation services on our last topic and how do we broaden that out? And then how do we increase diversity in our neighborhood associations? I know that's something that some of our, our neighborhoods have struggled with. How do they have interpretation services when that's appropriate? And so I think those, actually those two issues go hand in hand. And I would love to see some more, some really quality work done in that area.
Yeah. Okay. Well, there's a lot to talk about there. Any, uh, any other comments on this section? Okay. Where to next, Courtney?
Thank you so much for asking. We are going to do, uh, the, um, last update and then move into more conversation. So this is the last update. There are three priorities in the sustaining infrastructure and services, uh, framework. Uh, the first is the community bond. And as you know, we're, um, underway with our, our region engagement for that with a goal for November 22 on, uh, the ballot. And thank you so much for taking that action on Monday evening to further that goal. Um, we're looking at lowering expenses as an ongoing initiative all of the time. So that's also listed in this area. And then the last is exploring opportunities to increase revenue. And we're expecting to look more closely at that, uh, in 2023. And so the, those are the updates. I don't believe there would be any questions on those three because I think you're all very aware of where we're going on those topics. The last, um, slide is really about this commercial air service, um, conversation that we were hoping to start this evening. And I just put a couple of things on this slide. It's, again, you have a separate report in your packet about this. And I know that Kristin is here, as is, uh, John Pascal, to answer any questions. But, um, the key issue is whether or how the, um, airport would be, um, improved to be able to support larger commercial airplane, airplanes and air traffic. And so it's a question of whether we should go forward to do more investigation and analysis so that we have a better, um, better insights about what capital improvements are going to be required and a funding strategy to try to get those in place.
Right.
And so because you have a lot more information in your packet, I'm going to stop sharing so we can have a broader conversation about this piece.
Kristen, or Kristen, do you want to take us, uh, into this one or do you want John to?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start with some of the background, you know. So we, the Commercial Air Service Initiative started about four and a half years ago as a community-led initiative to secure commercial air service out of the, the Salem Airport. Um, at about the same time period, uh, we had adopted the city's strategic plan. And one of the projects under, um, the Strong and Diverse Economy, um, was to develop a business plan for the airport. You know, so we completed that, what, a couple of years ago? And one of the projects within that business plan, um, was tied to commercial air service, which is why we're bringing this back to this body to talk about as a policy item, uh, because it did have a home under the city's strategic plan. Um, and because we are now finding, based on recent information through the TSA, that there's going to be a very significant amount of investment required and terminal expansion required if we're going to service planes, um, over 60 seats. Uh, the Commercial Air Services Group has, um, been doing a great deal of work. We have, uh, airlines that are interested in, in servicing Salem. One has provided a letter to the TSA, uh, that airline is Aha. And their service, uh, is with smaller planes, the, the 50-ish seater planes. Um, they submitted their letter to the TSA and that's what initiates our engagement with TSA and TSA coming to the airport to do an assessment. So this assessment occurred in April, following Aha's letter to TSA. Um, we found out from TSA that, that the airport as it is and which was just fine back in 2008 to meet TSA needs, no longer can accommodate the kind of equipment and the security screening that they do. So we immediately engaged our airport consultants to look at the, the TSA assessment and translate that into actual physical improvements and, um, cost estimates. We had them prepare two different approaches, one for the 50-seat planes, but another for the larger planes. Because the two other carriers that are looking at Salem, um, do the bigger planes. And so there, there are different needs depending on the size of the plane. So, uh, in July, earlier this month, we received, uh, that report back from our consultants. And the cost estimate to do the improvements within the terminal, um, to accommodate TSA to serve the 50-seat planes has a price tag of 3.9 million for just the improvements, not the other staffing and other functions, um, that will also have, have cost implications. To do, to manage, uh, servicing the larger planes, we will have to actually do a terminal expansion. And the, uh, cost associated with that is in the 10 to 12 million dollar range. So in either case, um, they're big price tags. Uh, it's more than we have available in the airport fund. So we're going to have to look at other options to fund this. Um, so we want to share this with council, uh, answer any questions that you may have and then talk about next steps, which could be coming back later this fall with an analysis of the different options that we have for funding, which could be legislative, you know, maybe a recommendation to add this to the council's legislative policy, um, an agenda. It could be, um, coming back with, um, different options like, um, private placement of, uh, of debt and then looking at what sort of fees or revenue would be needed to, uh, pay for that debt service over the next, you know, 10 to 20 years. So that's where we stand now and John and I are both here to answer questions.
Did you have any ongoing, uh, cost estimate in terms of staffing? You mentioned staffing also, uh, or would that be handled by landing fees and other income from the?
Um, over time, it could be handled by other income. Um, but we would need to be providing fee waivers for the first few years of service to secure the commercial service. And John, I'll let you speak more to the operating side of things.
Uh, yes, thank you. Hi, John Pascal, Airport Manager, in the staff report, I know there's a lot of data and numbers in there. Uh, just in terms of staffing to, to ramp up to, uh, a staffing level, a bare minimum staffing level that could manage particularly the security side, um, of commercial air service, but also, uh, on the operational side. Um, it's roughly 500- Um, it's roughly five hundred plus thousand dollars per year. Um, there wouldn't be enough, there would be a gap in the first two to three to four years of revenue generation to cover just the staffing needs, much less other costs and things that we haven't drilled down into yet. So, so on top of the infrastructure gap, there's going to be a, a revenue cost gap as well, particularly on the staffing side.
And then you've had this one airline, AHA, make a, uh, an inquiry or say they're interested through TSA. What are they interested in? Uh, is this a, what kind of a service are we talking about? Do we know what this is from here to where and how frequent?
Yeah, I don't have a, I don't have those specifics yet, at least in terms of documentation. I understand that they're planning on, on, uh, sending a, a second letter with actual start dates and proposed flight times. But as I understand it, they would be talking about two flights a week, uh, from Salem to Reno.
Okay.
The fifty-seat Embraer one forty-five.
Great, thank you. Uh, Council Hoi?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as I understand it, you know, the, at least this one airline and maybe others are, are interested in sooner rather than later. Um, so I'm curious, you know, what our timeline might be for something like this? Should we able to, be able to put together the funding? But I would also like to, just to kind of back to, uh, Ms. Rutherford's comments earlier, I would like the staff to explore the options for funding this. Obviously, we're not going to do this out of the general fund. We need, we need some creative, uh, solutions to this situation. So I'm hoping that staff will start looking at, how can we finance this expansion? You know, usually capital costs are a little bit easier to find alternative funding for than ongoing costs. So I would like to hear back as soon as possible on some, some other ways that we might fund this. And I think, you know, maybe a combination of ways. I think potentially there's state money. I think that there's, um, maybe public-private partnerships. I mean, who knows all the different ways, but I would love to hear some, a detailed report back on that soon, uh, to get an idea of, you know, where we could go with this.
Certainly, we can come back, um, with that analysis and share that in terms of the construction schedule. Um, I believe that the larger improvements were going to be a twelve to eighteen-month construction schedule. The, uh, improvements for the fifty-seat carrier that would be internal, I think, were still close to a year. Um, and then there's also design and permitting as a part of that process that adds time.
Okay, very good. Uh, Council Nordike?
Uh, thank you. I too am interested in finding out funding options, uh, as soon as possible. And I agree, it's not a general fun type fund that I think would be appropriate. I, first of all, I want to make sure I understand a few things in the staff report though. So the staff report mentions four point nine for the bare bones improvements for a small craft, correct? For the fifty passenger seat or so, correct?
Uh, three point nine, I believe, is the number.
Three point nine, excuse me. Sorry, I was, uh, three point nine for that. And then if you wanted to have the much larger jets, say up to hundred eighty-nine passengers, that's where you would need to do the renovations and the expansions to the tune of ten to twelve million, correct?
Correct.
Okay, now after that, the staff reports, uh, lists a number of operational five hundred thirty thousand for airport staffing, three hundred fifty-eight thousand for fire and police staffing, and five hundred fifty thousand or so for ground support equipment. So I want to make sure I'm understood what I'm reading here. Those three different expenses I just mentioned, we, if we, even if we do only the very modest upgrade of three point nine million, we would have to come up with two, correct?
So, um.
It's not like you'd have to have larger staffing for the larger planes, right? It's at the same cost for your having the fifty-passenger plane or the one hundred eighty, one hundred eighty-nine passenger plane. It, I just want to make sure I'm understanding your report correctly.
Uh, yes, that is correct. I'll jump in, Kristen. That's, uh, other than maybe the police department because the, the, the police officer only has to be on site when the TSA checkpoint is open and operational. So depending on number of flights per week, that could amount to a quarter of an F T E or a half of an F T E that would, that would build up over time as air service expanded. Um, the other thing you mentioned is the ground handling equipment. And as we talked about prior, we have state funding to cover those costs. So that's, that's in there as a cost, but there's a funding source already identified for that. Uh, we'll just be starting the procurement process on that here shortly. But, but the staffing costs, both on the airport side, police and fire, um, are, are the major costs. There's obviously s- other smaller, you know, increases in expenses here at the airport for having passengers through the terminal. But without drilling down into the, the finer details, we didn't add a lot of those.
Okay, so what I'm trying to build up to is the fact that when I look at the projected costs versus the projected revenues, I see a big deficit based on the information you've provided. Even if we, you're able to use that grant, which I know I voted to approve, we still have five hundred thirty thousand in airport staff and around three hundred fifty-eight thousand in police and fire. But then you scroll to the bottom of the report, the estimated revenues are only eighty to one hundred fifty thousand dollars annually for years one and two. Um, so I mean, I, I understand that after that, there's this big swing in projected estimated revenue. After that, it says estimated revenues might be anywhere between two fifty and four hundred thousand. These numbers seem very vague and I know it's impossible to have a crystal ball and that precise level of accuracy. But, um, what I'm trying to say is I want to support commercial service, but I also am looking at a spreadsheet here that shows us in the red for at least years. So that's why I am in full support of, we need to find some creative solutions because if we want to make this pencil and support our business community, support all of our community members who want to meet up with their family via this airline service. We want to grow our economy. I know I want to do that. Um, we need staff to find some creative, uh, funding solutions because otherwise this isn't, this isn't going to work without that.
Yeah, and I think you, you hit the nail on the head. So we talked a little bit about the infrastructure funding gap, which is a big dol- a big, a big dollar item, big ticket dollar item in that, but there's also an operations, uh, expense gap as well. Um, it's difficult to project, uh, anticipated revenues without knowing exactly how many flights per week of what type of aircraft. So we made some assumptions, um, very broad assumptions. Uh, we, we understand that some of the airline fees would be waived for the first two years. Council already made that decision. Uh, we would see growth in things like parking, fuel flowage, some of the, some of the fees we already collect. But without knowing things like how many gallons of gas they're going to take and how many people are going to park here versus getting dropped off and those sorts of things. We're really just, it was a very conservative revenue estimate. It certainly could be more than that, but we just don't have any way of knowing right now. Um, we can only just make assumptions. But you're right, there is a gap.
Council Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, John, I think you could answer this or maybe, maybe Kristen. You say the fire and police is three hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars. Ground support security is five hundred fifty thousand dollars. Is that yearly?
That's correct. That's an annual incremental cost. So the, the, for instance, the airport staff, that's, that's in addition to the staff that we.
Okay, so I add five hundred thirty thousand for the staffing, three hundred fifty-eight thousand for the fire and police, five hundred fifty for ground support and operations. And that comes up to one million, four hundred thirty-eight dollars, four hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars. And then I look at your best revenue estimate is four hundred thousand dollars annually. And right now, what we have committed or almost committed, we don't know, is one plane that is going to have two flights of fifty passengers max per week. So I look at this and say, yeah, this is a business plan. It's a failed business plan. It's going to cost us one point four three eight million dollars per year and the maximum we're going to get back right now is four hundred thousand dollars. You know, that's, I, 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 I'm not even now talking about the issues that I have spoken about before. That is, uh, um, uh, you know, greenhouse gas emissions and how it fits with the climate action and whether people, you know, how many cars drive to Portland and how many cars stay here. And I'm also, will tell you that I met with, uh, uh, folks who support the airport a while back, uh, all Angio Niwuchi and some other people who have done some really good surveys. Um, and they were talking about, and you and I had a talk about, you know, we could have charging stations, electrical start, charging stations for air, airplanes. And then that will theoretically at some point decrease greenhouse gas emissions. But that to me too is, I'm sorry for this pun, pie in the sky. Um, but what happens, what I look at this and say, okay, let's, let's say we can solve the greenhouse gas emissions problems because everybody, all airplanes are now going to be, uh, electrified. Well, if they're all electrified, you know, what's the, what's the advantage from going from Salem? We're, we're, it's just the same as when they're all gas powered. Uh, 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 it's, it's still not going to pencil out. So those are my concerns. I have more, but I'll let, I'll let the, uh, other people have their hands up.
Okay, Council Stapleton?
Thank you. Um, quick question. To my recollection, and I could be wrong. Um, we already voted on receiving some grant funding for some equipment. Am I misremembering?
No, that is correct.
Okay, and where are we at on purchasing that equipment?
We just received the funds from the state, uh, I believe it was earlier, either earlier in July or late June. So, um, it's, it's made its way into the airport fund and now we're starting the public procurement process.
We actually have one step before the procurement process and that is to come back to council with a vegetarian amendment to get budget approval for those funds.
Thank you, Kristen.
Okay, and can you remind me, I feel really bad that I don't, don't know, um, what equipment we did all agree to buy?
Yeah, so it's, it's what we call essentially, it's ground support equipment. So it's all of the aircraft service equipment, uh, particularly a passenger loading bridge of, you know, get people on and off the plane, uh, the belt loader that puts the, the luggage on and off the air, aircraft. So when you go fly, you see all the ground support equipment that, that hovers around an aircraft, uh, tugs to bring bags to and from the terminal, uh, all of that type of equipment. None of that exists at Salem today. So, um, Representative Moore Green provided the, the airport with about five hundred and forty thousand dollars to cover the equipment costs. So in Council Anderson's math, I did want to make one, one correction there. When you, you added in the ground support equipment, we do have a funding source for that. So you'd want to add the, the terminal costs and then the staffing costs and, and then the, um, whatever debt service that would be on any.
What does that, what does that equal then, John? If you take out, remove that from one point, one point four three eight?
Just on the staffing side, you mentioned five hundred thousand or so for the airport and other three hundred plus thousand for police and fire. So there's eight hundred thousand or so right there just in staffing costs. Um, it's a little bit tricky because as it stands right now, police and fire do not bill the airport directly for those services. They've always absorbed those costs. My assumption is without having that, been told that, that they will continue to do that. So those costs are, are for those departments, uh, versus the airport. Um, so there's not a direct bill there. So airport costs and then whatever debt service obligation, we may have to do the infrastructure improvements.
But what you're telling me is if they don't, if they aren't assigned to the airport, they're going to be the same amount of money at the police and fire.
Correct.
Okay.
I, I, I'm going to assume, uh, because this does sort of get, get at a certain point into a bit of conjecture that if, if the council says we want to move forward on this and that you're going to return with reports, we'll get a more sophisticated look or a more detailed look. I don't know sophisticated, but more detailed look at these costs and how they fit together with existing revenue, with future revenue, and then any kind of discussion of potential, uh, alternative revenue sources that may exist. Because this right now is very, I think it's hard to follow a little bit. And I kind of understand what you're talking about, but I'm having trouble just following it. So that'd be part of the report, right? If, if, if folks are still interested when this keeps going, is that, am I getting this wrong, Kristen?
What we would come back with is, uh, it would be a two-part report. So one would be for funding options to do the terminal improvements. You know, what, what resources are out there and available? They may not be immediate. They might be competitive resources, but it would be kind of the spectrum of options. The other would be to go into more detail in terms of the, the, the business plan case
Right.
for operations. You know, what, what the increasing expenses would be, what revenues we would expect based on certain types of service. Um, and depending on those types of service, our partners over in the fire department and the police department may have to add staff to be able to de- dedicate those resources for more frequent, uh, airline service.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's going to be hopefully as time passes, if you go ahead, it will become a firmer discussion of this. It's not a may or could be or any, it'll be more of a, here's where it is, here's how it looks. Yeah. Council Barney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my question, um, boy, uh, I hear a lot of interest in this in the community, anybody I've talked to. And I see it as a potential huge economic driver for our city. I would like to see this happen if we can make it happen. And so that's why to me, as soon as possible, to investigate it and see what we can do. I feel that is really, really crucial. Um, and that, you know, I, this, uh, two-part, um, report or whatever, I think we need sooner rather than, than later because we really need to move forward on this. I like the idea of not having so many folks having to drive to, to Portland. And, uh, we've all been doing too much of that. And, uh, there's, there's really a lot of, a lot of folks that want, um, want commercial air service here. I guess my question is, uh, what is the airport fund actually used for?
Uh, for really for the day-to-day operations of the airport. Um, it's a, an enterprise fund, so we generate all of our own revenue and we pay all of our own expenses. Uh, any money that we don't expend in a given fiscal year goes into our contingency fund. We've been building that up over the course of several years. We use that to match federal grants. We use that to do, uh, building improvements and maintenance and things that aren't, uh, grant eligible. Uh, we've got a significant amount of just maintenance on the existing terminal now without, without air service that, that will take a, a good portion of that. So, uh, but that's really what the airport fund is for.
And it's a very active general aviation airport, correct?
Very, very much so, yep.
Okay, and I think that's, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. With, with that in mind, I was curious though, with commercial air service here, how will that impact our current users?
Well, the biggest impact would be if we have aircraft that are larger than sixty seats. And clearly that's two of the, two of the three carriers that we're talking to. That puts us into what is called a full TSA security program. That means the entire airport. So that involves any tenants, local tenants, aircraft owners, business owners on the airfield that require unescorted access to the airport. Will have to either go through criminal history background check or at least a security threat assessment. They will have to be badged. They will have to have their badge with them. They will be subject to random security inspections, both in their vehicles and in their hangars. Uh, so it's, it's a much bigger impact than if you'd have sixty seats or fewer. Then you have a limited security program, which is focused more just around the, the terminal area and the ramp as opposed to the entire airport. So it's a, it's a big leap to not only in infrastructure, but also in security program to, to go more than sixty-seat aircraft. In terms of aircraft operations, there really won't be any impact to local tenants. We have plenty of capacity at our airport, uh, to land all types of aircraft. We do that now with helicopters and business jets and small planes and all sorts of, uh, flying machines.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Council Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. I, um, you know, just a couple slides ago, we're talking about increased revenue. You know, there's really only two ways. Either we're going to squeeze the people we have living today here, figure out a way to, to do that. And past, um, task forces have found it difficult. And here we are coming into a recession. I mean, there's just no doubt about it, right? And that's not even taking account inflation, you know? So, um, uh, economic development is one of our only options. You know, that's why I also am on board with Hoi, Barney, everybody else that's, wants to see this sooner rather than later. And the, um, a couple of things. First is, um, Salem has a high, uh, big immigrant community. Now the immigrants, right, we call them that because they came from somewhere else. So a lot of their life is spent traveling to see their loved ones. And in this case, a Latino Mexican community, they go down I five in, in California and northern Mexico. Those are, those are the paths that they visit on a regular basis or family visiting them. You know, so this is, this kind of travel is, um, accessibility is very important. And also just to get the cars off the road, I mean, just Tuesday, my family, a few of them going to San Francisco, last minute, the car they were going to use, flat tire, they had to use a different, I mean, they had to get a ride in the end of the day. And so it took four trips, right? Dropping them off. four trips, right? Dropping them off, coming back, dropping off, coming back. You know, so I saw it myself. So I'm really, I really want to encourage staff to, you know, as they're coming up with these estimates. I mean, I've started businesses from zero. It is, it's an investment. It's a risk. That's just how it is. There's no way we're going to see a positive gain in the first year or two. Many people don't know how to read business plans. If they see a profit in the first year, that's a concern, you know? So I encourage the staff to give us maybe a three to five years report. And I just highly encourage them to keep working with our partners like Travel Salem. And, because it was really surprising to see the response we got when people assumed we were going to close a certain runway. I was really surprised. And it was, but what was neat about it was I was able to read their stories and it was really interesting, you know? So surprising how many people use that runway and how many people were concerned that it might change, you know? So it just gives us a little glimpse into the future. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think probably part of the problem that we're having right now is that, you know, we have these financials that are highly speculative because they're based on a lot of assumptions that we, because we don't know the answers yet. We have, there's more airlines than just Aha that are very interested in coming here with bigger planes and other, other services. But, and I think that, I had a meeting, was it, I think it was last week with Mr. Baskell about some of these conversations and these topics. And I heard something from him that I think everybody needs to be aware of. And I, he's not convinced that we are committed to this. And so I think that one of the things that we need to, a message that staff needs to hear from us tonight, and I don't know how that looks, but they need to hear from us. And I, I've heard that message previously and I'm hearing it tonight, that we are committed to this. But staff so far hasn't, hasn't heard that message. And so somehow we need to deliver that message to, to staff. So they are confident that we are supportive of this endeavor, that we are, that we believe in moving this forward and that, and that we're ready to embrace commercial air service here. And they need to hear that from us. And I don't know exactly how that, what that would look like. And maybe Ms. Rutherford could help us with that, what she needs from us to, to get that message. But I think that once we make that commitment and once we really start, you know, right, we've kind of, I don't know what the, we've had, we've had a foot on the boat and a foot on the dock with this thing. And it's, I think that's what's creating the uncertainty with the staff and with the, with the supporters of this and with the airlines. They want to know that we're committed and that we're ready to get this done somehow. And like Counselor Gonzalez said, you know, we don't know how it's going to work out ultimately. But we're, if we want to make it happen, we've got to make that commitment and figure it out. And so somehow I think if we can get out of tonight with, with that commitment on the record, I think that would be really an important step forward. So Ms. Rutherford, I don't know if that, if you're hearing what you need or if you need us to vote or what you need, but I, I want to make sure you get the message you need.
You're muted right now, Chris.
I'm certainly hearing councils, you know, interest and support in this. I think the true, the true commitment comes down to when we are allocating funding for this and making a budget commitment. And it is, it's a big investment. And as Counselor Gonzalez mentioned, you know, there's, we're starting up some sort of, you know, new entrepreneurial activity. There's risk that's associated with that. The, one of the key risks here is that we could invest 10 to 12 million dollars in a terminal and we could bring on staff and start hiring. And there's nothing to stop any of these airlines who say today that they want to be here in a year from actually being here in a year or two years or five years. So that in terms of staff caution, it, it's our sense of being good fiduciaries of public funds and how far out over our skis, you know, we get moving forward with this. I think the only funds that we have available to immediately pivot to match the timelines that these airlines are saying that they want us to meet, which would be Aha wants to, they're communicating, they want to start service next spring. The others, you know, within a year. Terminal improvements are going to take nine months to, or to longer, you know, to maybe 18 months, depending on what, what service level we're building to. And knowing that we've got that much lead time to actually design and build these improvements, we would need funding today to be able to get close to meeting the timelines that they're, that they are saying they want to, want us to meet. And, and that leaves us with general fund. If we're going to act immediately to be able to provide service next spring, next year. I mean, we can't do the construction in that timeframe, but to most closely meet those timelines, it would have to be a general fund commitment. And we have general fund challenges right now. Now, the, the next approach would be, let's take a look at what other funding resources we have available to look at public-private partnership, to look at legislative requests, to look at potential loans, to maybe do the urban renewal boundary adjustment, because we have $2 million in the Fairview Urban Renewal area, but with a boundary adjustment could be used on the airport to, to pay for some of these costs for the improvements, you know, and to bring back packages like that. But, but those options are going to, it's a longer game plan there, you know? It's a year, two years possibly to secure that kind of funding. And then plus another 12 to 18 months of design and build, you know? So there's not an option outside of general fund that is going to jumpstart this immediately. So, so again, I hear, I hear the support and we can shift immediately to looking at what those various options are to bring back to council.
Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you. I had a question that was a little bit more in the weeds and I appreciate Counselor Hoy kind of taking us up to, I really didn't mean this, but the 30,000-foot level. That's just one of the things I regularly say. So I apologize for the pun. So thank you, Chris. I'm glad I could make us all laugh. One of my in-the-weeds questions is, is about this idea of building up, right? And a lot of times, you know, we have this great idea for a business, I'm talking about, you know, Counselor Gonzalez, right? This great idea for a business that needs all this money, that needs all this time. But there is smaller things that we can do that build up. And, and I'm wondering in that report, if you can include kind of the layout of what that could look like, not only with infrastructure, but also with employees. You know, I know that with one carrier, you may need less employees than we need to hire than if we had all three carriers. And so I would like to see that laid out as well. And, and just to state my general support, you know, I think, I talk a lot about Salem going from a middle-sized town to a big-sized town. And I think this is again, a part of that growing pains. And, and I appreciate all the things that the other counselors have said about, you know, cultural ways in which we're using this. You know, I think we need to pay attention to that and see if there's some way that we can gauge how the different members of our community are going to use this and benefit from it. And also about trying to get some revenue here. You know, that's also another thing that we struggle with as well. So those are areas that I'm really intrigued by and interested in. So thank you for your work to date. And I know that this is going to be a heck of a lot more work for you too. So thank you in advance.
Yeah, counsel, I can speak real quickly to that build-up concept that you just spoke about, you know? Because we've been asked a lot about what's, what's the least that we can do? What's the minimal investment that we can make to get air service started and then expand over time? And there are basically kind of two pro formas here. You know, there's one for the smaller planes and then there's the other option for the bigger planes. And in each of those scenarios, what we've provided in terms of the improvements, the 3.9 million or the 10 to 12 million, that is the, the minimal for each of those different programs. Because those are based on TSA requirements, saying that that's what they need to be able to provide their security service from our terminal. So if we're going the route of the bigger planes, their footprint doesn't fit in our terminal. And if we've got bigger planes, then we're also exceeding building capacity. So that has to be addressed as well. So unfortunately, there's not a, you know, let's build the, let's build a thousand-square-foot home and then a few years down the road, when the family grows and we've got better jobs, then we, you know, add on the, the primary suite with the soaking tub or something. You know, it's, 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 we can't really expand incrementally like that and meet the TSA requirements.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate fellow Counselor Gonzalez' analysis of this as a business plan. And I understand, he's a businessman, he understands that. But it seems to me in a business plan, you need to look at everything and you need to see how much of revenue do I expect to get in versus how much I have to spend to run this business and to buy the products. And it looks to me like, I, I can't read the whole council, but I think the council is generally moving toward, let's keep moving on this. And I look at the, on the page two of the report, there's opportunities and risk. And I look at all the opportunities and I have big question marks by almost all of them. Because increased tourism to Salem in the Willamette Valley, how can we prove that? When people come to the Willamette Valley all the time, they fly to Portland, they rent a car, they go every place. So we're going to get more tourism if they fly to Salem? I don't know. Increased potential for economic development. I'd like to see some fleshing out of that. Reduction in carbon emissions, I really have doubts about that. All these things are just kind of like, here's some general things that might be opportunities. Then we go down to risk and the risks aren't general. The risks are real. The risks are concrete. We're going to have to spend 14 to 16 million dollars and we're going to have to spend something over a million dollars a year just to run the place. So, you know, if we go down this, I, I, I would certainly like a, a much better analysis than just a bullet point on this is what the opportunities are.
Thank you. Counselor Nordike?
Thank you. Really appreciate the conversation. I just want to underline and underscore that, yes, I'm supportive of bringing commercial service to Salem. I'm always interested in finding out what are the creative ways that we can make this happen. And I want to make sure I understand that when we're talking about this initial investment, the 3.9 million, has this, will the staff, I don't know if you have yet, but it sounds like we're going to go down the, down the path, asking for a more detailed cost estimate. Is there an option to have some sort of modular setup? Is there some way to do this on the cheap that it doesn't cost 3.9 million? Are we absolutely positive that 3.9 million is the bare minimum that it will take to meet the TSA requirements? And if we're not sure today, then we need to be sure of whether there is even some sort of modular program that you can do, some sort of temporary fix while we get this program in the air. God, this is bad. Oof. I, I blame Anderson. He started with a pie in the sky, then it was Stapleton. I'm so sorry. No, I'm not, not sorry. Okay. That's my question.
One thing I'd like to, to mention, a couple of things, is that you, you look at seriously different funding mechanisms for this that do not leave it exclusively in the hands of the city of Salem, that you take a look at this as a regional enterprise involving the three counties, the city of Salem, try to drag in some other cities, that this is a, a really an important thing for this region. And I think when you start doing that, you need to start looking potentially at a port authority or some other kind of, of both governance and funding mechanism. I can tell you that about 40 years ago, the city did look at a port of Salem because, just because of this discussion. This is not a new discussion. We've been down this road many, many times. We've made it and been burned both in, on this issue. But I think the one that is missing is finding that funding mechanism and governance mechanism that really answers the general fund problems Salem faces by using a very broad-based tax authority that allows you to go out and seek revenue at the lowest possible impact on the property owners with the highest return because you've got to spread far enough. But it, it clearly is a problem for our general fund to try to pick this up. So I hope you'll look at that kind of mechanism. I don't recall all the details of setting it up. I assume there's state legislation and all the rest of it that has to go to set it up. But I think that's, that may be the way you could find the kind of funding and bonding authority and other things you need, and perhaps even some of the legislative ability internally to accomplish some of these goals. And then not forget, and I know there is a, a group that will contact, and I've heard from them and I happen to agree. I think, I, I came here with airline service going on. United came in back in the 60s. And, and then I watched Delta come and go and take 2 million bucks of our money with them after using it up. So I, I think it's, it's really getting as firm a program as we possibly can, so that if we do attract somebody, they hang on. And I think that's also going to require you to take a, at least some level of informed look at the aviation, the commercial aviation industry and its capacity to deliver services at airports our size. I mean, we have been dropped a couple of times for a variety of reasons when, when this, this industry was sort of turned loose to be an enterprise industry rather than a government-regulated industry. And I think that's really important. I mean, how many pilots, how many planes? What, what's the state of the business out there? That the only one we have right now is, you know, two or three days a week to Reno tells you something about the industry. And I think it's important to, to kind of capture that. And there's people with real expertise in that, that throughout the region, throughout the state and, and actually the other states around us that will give you an idea of what that looks like. Not that there hasn't been really excellent work done by the, the advocates of this, but there's more to be done. It's an industry in transition right now and, and rapidly changing. So I, I, I would look forward to your, at least your proposal for what this could look like as a report. Cause I think that you're hearing some of the difficulties and I think you're hearing all the support that's here to move ahead. So that'd be, that's kind of my thoughts on it anyway.
I, I think a port district is a great thing to explore as our public-private partnerships. And I think partnerships with whichever carriers are seriously considering looking at our airport as potential investors in those improvements.
Yeah. Yeah. I hope you get them as investors. That's, Counselor Barney?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. And thank you, Mayor Bennett, for bringing up the, you know, building a broader base. I feel that's really, really crucial. I'm, I'm really encouraged tonight about, here we are brainstorming about these ideas that keep popping up and it just sounds, I, I'm liking the, the positivity of it. In regards to what Counselor Nordike brought up, I was thinking the same thing about modular or something. And then I thought, well, what about just something temporarily? Do we have hangars or buildings? You know, I'm not that familiar with what, with the structures that are out there, but do we have something that could be used temporarily, especially since we're looking at just a small airline service to begin with? I mean, how many of you have been to an airport recently that's not under construction? And those airports seem, still seem to function. You know, I don't see why we can't do the same thing.
They're always under construction. I can't remember when PDX wasn't under construction. You know, it just seems like a steady thing. Counselor Phillips?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Bennett. Thank you, Kristen and John, for being here and answering our questions. I, I guess, I want to say a couple of things. I'm very interested in moving forward with, you know, trying to get commercial services here in Salem. I mean, I think some of the presentations from Travel Salem and the local advocacy group, you know, talked about maybe best-case scenarios, but some really smart ideas of trying to tap into those most traveled-to communities up and down I-5, San Francisco, LA, maybe Phoenix. I mean, my guess is there's some economy of scale when we get to jets that are a little bit bigger. But, you know, it seems like the upfront cost is really quite substantial. So I appreciate the robust discussion we're having tonight. I guess my, my question is, I haven't heard us discussing this, but I remember in the presentations I've had with, with Travel Salem and with the advocacy, you know, the advocates for getting commercial service, is that there may be some additional benefits that haven't been captured in this. John, aren't, aren't there some grants we could qualify for if we do have commercial air service that we don't currently have access to?
That is correct. Yeah. If we, if we end up with commercial service and we exceed a certain number of deployments per year, the, the threshold is 10,000 deployments per year, then- then our annual entitlement for FAA grant funding goes from the current level of 150,000 a year as a non-primary, essentially general aviation airport, up to a million a year minimum. And we compete more favorably for discretionary funds as well. So there is a capital improvement benefit for sure, once you cross that threshold. So that would be something that would be two or three years down the road, minimum. But there is absolutely that benefit as well. That's not revenue, it can't be used for staffing or anything, that's strictly for capital improvement. So we could get to a point where the, the terminal and the parking and the other improvements that we'll need as we grow, as you suggested, Mayor, airports are always under construction because they quickly outgrow themselves. But that funding would be available for those types of improvements. And with commercial air service, you're much, much more competitive.
10,000 deployments means what, John?
10,000 people got on an airplane and left Salem. So if you divided that by, per year, yep, yep, that's the minimum.
Not 10,000 flights?
No, 10,000 people.
Okay, good. That was real clear.
It's a fairly low threshold, actually. It wouldn't take a lot for us to exceed 10,000. We couldn't do it with just the, just the 50-seater twice a week, that wouldn't get us enough, even if it were full. But we'd get maybe halfway there. Certainly with one or two of the larger aircraft, we'd get, we'd get there quicker. So there's certainly future capital improvement funds available to us.
And, and then my final comment, thank you, John, for answering those questions and helping put that in perspective. I think moving forward, you know, if it's not too much work from staff and others, it would be good to see comparables. My family just flew out of Eugene, you know, we found a way to do that going through Texas for our vacation earlier this month. And it's a nice airport, I mean, I've flown in and out of there for 20 years when it, when it's, that makes the most sense. And I think the environmental impact that I remember Travel Salem talking about is really when you start flying south, the benefit is you don't drive north to then fly south. So we're a little closer to start with. And that actually does make sense in my mind from, from, from just the, the math and thermodynamics of it. But I guess what I, I want to say finally is just, I'm willing to spend a, a little bit from our general fund if that's what it takes to move this forward. You know, at some point, it's, it's too much, but we just need more information. So, I mean, I appreciate the robust discussion. And even if I am willing to spend that money, and I'm the only one, it doesn't matter. Like in less than two years, we run into a massive problem in that sense. So we're going to have to have continued discussions about, you know, where we find the funds. So I really appreciate everything that's been said, especially Mayor Bennett. Your experience is showing tonight, your comments were really good. I think we should pay that a lot of attention.
Thank you. Counselor Gonzalez?
Yeah, you know, last question, I, it seems like this TSA visit threw things off a little. Because on one hand, you know, we're, I thought we were maybe more ready. And, you know, we have these airlines, three airlines that are ready to fly out next year, knowing that they're not, I mean, there's letters of intent, at least two of them, I think. That TSA visit, are these, when they, when they came here, I'm assuming, I mean, there's always two kinds of people when you're dealing with, people that want to make it work, to help you, and then people that are looking for ways to say no kind of thing. The, the comments that they made, were they recommendations, were they requirements, were they ideas? You know, is that, is there a difference there in some of the things that were mentioned today that the TSA was asking for? Were they hard-line requirements or just recommendations, you know, based on, you know, their experience? Maybe thinking about us down the road?
Yeah, so actually, there were two separate visits. The first visit I had was with the regulatory staff. Those are the folks that'd be responsible for all the security activity around the airport perimeter, security, managing, all of that. So for them to, to let us know what the minimum requirements are for less than 60 seats or greater than 60 seats. And so there, that's, that's strictly regulatory. The second visit was with the facilities folks and with our architects and terminal planners to talk about the two options that Kristin talked about earlier. If we, if we had only 50-seat regional jet service, which I think is what everybody assumed would return to Salem when we had air service return when Delta left. And then when, it was at that time that we spoke to them about the possibility that these larger aircraft may show up either sooner or at the same time as the 50-seater. And then they said, well, that's a whole different level of terminal capacity issues. Now, it doesn't change the size of the TSA checkpoint or baggage screening equipment. That's all going to happen regardless. So those are minimum requirements as well. The capacity issues for the larger aircraft are more around code compliance, occupancy, restroom facilities, ADA access, those sorts of things. That helps.
Just to add to that, John, it's, the comments aren't really subjective. A lot of it really has to do with geometry of what fits and what fits where with different equipment and different process flows compared to almost 15 years ago or so, you know, whenever we last had service.
Yeah, if you used to fly regularly, if you remember back about 15 years ago, you used to just walk through a magnetometer and if you beeped, that kind of hand wanted you and your bag went through the little scanner. Now, if you go to PDX or any of Eugene or any of the other airports and you look at the size of the checkpoints, they've grown exponentially. They're very long and very wide, they've got big body scanners and all kinds of things that we, our terminal did not have before and is not sized for now. So it will take up a significant amount more space than it did 15 years ago. And that was, that was kind of an eye-opener for us.
Do you, Kristin, do you feel now that you have enough information to move ahead on this? Do you need a formal move ahead? I think-
No, I do. I, we'll have to go back and look at budget because we're going to have to engage our consultants to do this work.
Right.
So we've already spent a good chunk of our consulting budget to get to where we are. So we may have to come back with a budgetary amendment, I, I don't know yet. We'll have to look at that.
But, but after you've had a chance to kind of set up what the work plan would look like, you'll come back in whatever, September, October, November, looking for some budgetary authority if you need it to do the kind of detailed work that would be necessary to put this together.
Yes.
So counsel can make it absolutely as important, because there's millions of dollars in general fund money. I think probably want to make absolutely the best decision possible and make sure this happens as it moves forward, if it can. So I think that's, is that, is that in line with what everybody's thinking at this point? Am I, any problems with that approach? Okay, why don't we just go ahead that way and then we'll have you come back for? I think you can get a sense that it's a very, very broad support broadly, you know, sort of overarching, just to, to know what we're talking about and where we're going. So if you can do that for us, I think that'll really help move this forward.
Absolutely.
But Jared? Okay, I, that's everything that's on the agenda. Is there anything now, I, I believe now we have, are there areas that you would like to now talk about relative to this, this whole discussion? You want to add to the list or you have other, is that, am I correct? Kristin, that's where you want to go next?
Yes, correct. Because, you know, the one item that we already hit on it earlier this evening that has come up in council meetings and in one-on-one meetings in the past has been this, you know, this look at boards and commissions. So this is an example of the kind of thing that, you know, if, if there are other counselors that have something that they would like to introduce this evening that we could dive into and bring back in November.
It's a pretty good list you've given us. I mean, it's pretty broad, but is there, is there anything missing you'd like to capture? Well, good. Oh, Counselor Hoy?
Sorry, my only thought was, I know we talked about the bond, but I just want to think optimistically and, and so not just about passing it, but about implementation. Do we have an implementation plan as a part of this? Like what's the, what are the first steps? You know, what, what, how are we going to hit the ground running when this thing passes?
Really good point. People vote $300 million, they're going to want to see something come out of the ground, I think.
Definitely.
Counselor Stapleton?
Yeah, thank you. I too would love to know just more, I think we've talked about this before, but just more details about how we're going to move forward with the transportation master plan update. I know there's so much going on, but what does that look like? And, and how does counsel play a role in that? And, and will there be, you know, advisory boards for that or committees? That will be really, I'm really interested in that.
You feel that's covered in what we said tonight on the TSP and where we're headed with that, or?
Well, I heard, you know, the steps that we've taken already, which is great. And, and, you know, we're going to hear back on that. And then I would love to see us move forward more with active transportation before we kind of tackle the vehicles, which I know the vehicles is just a huge, huge part of this. I don't know if that's what we're going to do next or, or if, you know, I, I don't know how we're going to move forward. And I don't know how my role is going to be in this or counsel's role, you know? Those of us who would love to participate in this. So that's kind of the detail that I'm looking for.
Okay, I'm sure the transportation, well, Ms. Rethfret, everybody hears that, that they want to, okay. Courtney, whoever is going to-
We are making notes.
Translate that across, yeah, okay. Counselor Nordike?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, as always, I appreciate the robust discussion that we have. I love our work sessions. I'm going to nerd out here for a moment and say how much I appreciate the more free-flowing conversation that we can have with our staff to do a deep dive into issues. So I really appreciate everyone's comments tonight. I don't, oh, because I'm not on the finance committee, I don't have a convenient spot or time or place to mention it. But I really, I keep hearing about how other communities have some sort of public safety bond or something like that. And I know our top priority this year is the infrastructure bond measure. But I know that the general fund, a, a huge chunk of our general fund goes to police and fire. And we know that if we had even more robust services when it comes to mobile crisis, civilian-led and police-led, fire, EMTs, dispatchers, not only would that help with response times, internealing the full spectrum of public safety services, whether it's low acuity homeless person who is lost and confused and just needs someone to talk to, to we've got a murder suspect on the loose. We need the full spectrum of public safety services. And if we, I'm wondering whether we should consider down the road, future conversations to have that kind of thing go before the public. Because I think there would be robust support for something that was a public safety bond. This is to fund public safety. And by the way, that would also help with our little airport problem here because that ongoing cost includes police and fire. So if we have adequate funding for all of those things, that can assist with the cost of having a stepped-up airport that we, I think this entire council or most of the councils very, very supportive of. But there's some other priorities we can need too. And it could alleviate pressure on our general fund to explore climate action, more and more homelessness-related services, more low-income services. I just want us to think about that down the road. In fact, to have a robust discussion right now. But I know that that's been effective in places like Eugene and some other cities. I want us to consider that down the road. I think that could be, that could help us with our long-term finances that we've spent a lot of time talking about. We all care about the bottom line. We all care about staying in the black. It could be one of the ways that we help stay in the black.
It's a really good point. I, I point out to you, one that I would keep in mind is Marion County did a, a public safety levy. It's actually not a bond, it's a levy, but-
Thank you.
That, that really resulted in, in improving sheriff services in, in East Salem, really. In the east, you know, that portion of the county here really brought it up to an urban standard. So you may want to take a look at that and, and see what you, what you see there. Because it, I thought it was pretty remarkable that it passed. I thought it was pretty, pretty cool.
There you go.
Yeah.
As, as we mentioned-
Good idea. Tom Hamers. Oh, is that you? I'm sorry, Kristin.
Yeah, Kristin's-
We have revenue options calendared for early '23.
Right.
And so this would certainly fit right into that conversation.
Right.
Outstanding.
Yeah, keep the pool in mind. You've always got a whole crew up here in town that want a pool, along with their air service and everything else. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. First, in response to what Counselor Nordike was talking about, I'm the chair of the finance committee and we've been meeting and working quite assiduously on the bond, to get the bond all ready to go. And then we also have had some discussions about other potential sources of revenue that we've held off further discussions because of the bond. And then we've also had some discussions about our investment policy in light of where, you know, a lot, do we want to invest in companies that make their money off fossil fuels? Do we want to invest in companies that are Russian-based? Do we want to invest in companies that make their money off arms? And we've come up with a new investment policy that we passed on to the, to the council a while back. So I think that, that would be a, a good place for the next move. And you folks will all be happy to know, the second thing I had is totally escaped from my mind, so.
Well, keep it in, think of it, if you think of it, say so. Okay, okay, Kristin, did you want to, do you have anything you wanted to say?
No, I just, I really appreciate the conversation tonight. It is very, very helpful in guiding us to our next step. So thank you very much for that.
Is there anything else we can guide, John? I mean, we're not covering enough, okay. Courtney, what do you want to do now?
Well, I'd just like to close out by remembering a couple of upcoming conversations that we intend to bring back. The commercial air, as we've just discussed, the funding options and the business plan for operations. We also plan in September to be returning with a climate action plan update. And you should also be hearing about the policy questions and issues relating to lowering traffic speeds in neighborhood streets, on neighborhood streets. You've also asked us to think differently about a communication strategy, what other kinds of languages we might want to add into our portfolio of interpretation and translation. And then the scope of the board and commission conversation will better define as we return in November. So those are the bigger, oh, and then, I'm sorry, we also had a brief moment where we suggested that the CFO may be returning with some housing and homelessness information about the spending plan and the sources of money. Thank you.
Excellent, I see Tom remembered. You're muted, Tom. Still muted.
It's perfect, let's just move on.
Okay, I'm sorry, don't tell him.
Yeah, you thought you got away, but no. Now I forgot, no, your helicopter hovering over me, folks, which is, which is back to the air stuff. I, I just want to say I agree with Counselor Stapleton that when we look at the TSP, we got to look at other means of transportation than the single occupancy vehicle. That's all, thanks.
Okay, very good. Anything else? And when we're meeting again, Courtney is?
Well, aside from those updates on those very specific topics, we'll be coming back in November in a work session format to give you a, a whole bunch of options for how to implement these things that we're discussing this evening.
And so that next one will actually be taking action, more, more direct?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, well, thank you very much, we're adjourned.
For more videos and for more information, go to CapitalCommunityMedia.org and follow us on social media.